Call the meeting of the Mount Clemens Board of Education to order, please. Call roll.
Hey, Mr. Rick.
Here, you sound, you sound bad, Mr. Shepherd.
I, yeah, I don't have that. Mr. Bruley.
Uh, here.
Mrs. Escalante.
Here.
Dr. McFadden.
Here.
Mr. Monk.
Here.
Ms. Garrett.
I'm here, but I can't hear you very well.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Ms. Walker sent a text that she had a meeting at six o'clock. She would try to, uh, she would try to join us as soon as she's out of the meeting. There, there's a quorum has been established. Uh, next on the agenda was the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bruley, would you mind leading the pledge this evening?
Uh, fine. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which we are found. Thank you, my mind just went.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda are citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, and concerns. Uh, we ask that you be recognized, uh, state your name and, and address. Be mindful that you have three minutes to wish to make your inquiries, questions, or concerns. Also be mindful, you may not receive a response to your particular inquiry here this evening. And last, I ask that you address all questions, comments, and concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments.
Hello.
Good evening.
This is Shirley Monk, 155 Cass Avenue. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I would like to say, um, I just have a thank you. I would like to say thank you to the community and our school partners for their support towards our students and families during this pandemic and towards our Thanksgiving and Christmas giving programs. Myself and my colleague, we faced some challenges as we had to go about executing our programs in a non-traditional manner, as well, as well as having some commit to helping and then back out. But in the end, we developed some new school partnerships in which we had an abundance of support to make it successful. There are so many that I would like to thank and acknowledge, but I would exceed my time limit. So again, thank you, and again, to everyone, and Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you very much for those comments.
Hello, this is, this is Mary Campbell. I'm a King, um, teacher, and I wanted to address the board tonight to discuss the COVID hazard pay that was offered through the state of Michigan. When the law was written, it did not include all of your staff. It included your ancillary staff and your teachers from kindergarten through 12th grade. It did not include any provisions to providing the hazard pay to your ECSE teachers or your, um, Poh High preschool teacher. We are the only teachers in the district that are being asked to teach, um, to our children face to face. I realize that the hazard pay is an acknowledgement of what the efforts took place in the spring. But, um, I would encourage the district to consider extending, um, that hazard pay to our teacher, to these four teachers. I am one of them. Um, we worked diligently all spring to meet the needs of our students. I did go through the proper, uh, procedures in regards to filing an appeal with, um, Mrs. Tomlinson. And, you know, um, the, the response was what I expected, and it was the way the legislation was written. But I would like the board to consider, um, extending that whole, the hazard pay for those teachers, um, at King. Like I said, there's four of the teachers at King, and, um, the ancillary staff is covered. But of course, none of the paraprofessionals were covered either because they're not a direct-to-school employee, but thank you.
Thank you very much for the comments.
Hey, Patrick, I'm on eight two four seven dialed in. This is Paul Shepherd.
Uh, it's Dina Pankatay. I am a teacher at, um, Seminole Academy. Uh, I'm sorry, Mary, I just saw your hand go up.
Okay.
Are you finished?
Yeah, I had something else to say, but I had to wait another turn. Go ahead, you, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So I'm a teacher.
Hold on, hold on, it's my, I, I run the meeting now. Mary, if not, if you're not finished, go ahead and complete your statement before we start somebody else's. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl. I did finish that particular statement. I do have a different statement, and I, I believe I need to wait until everyone else has a chance to speak.
No, you still, you, you were still within your three minutes. You still had time.
Okay, so my second, um, I have two more statements. One of them, I wanted to take the opportunity as a former, um, MCA president to thank the two school board members who are, I believe, are serving their last school board meeting. Um, Ed, uh, Mr. Bruley has always been a great supporter of the, um, staff at, um, in our district. He has asked many of the right questions, um, even though people may not always want to hear the questions or always give answers. I have always respected his diligence and his, um, tenacity in getting an answer that he would deem as appropriate. So, um, I do know that, um, Ed was a big proponent of restoring the teachers', um, salary concessions, and that, um, for all those things, I would, um, like to thank him, and, um, was always an open ear for me, too. So we will, I miss you, Mr. Bruley. Also, I would be remiss in not thanking Ms. Escalante. Christina has handled her tenure with grace and dignity. I think those are probably the best words to use to describe Christina. She has, um, given the teachers love and support and encouragement through her time here, and we have appreciated all of her efforts to support us and the students and the families in Mount Clemens. So Christina, you are another person we are desperately going to miss. But thank you for the opportunity to work with both of you in my role as a teacher and as a union leader. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for those comments. Ms. Pankatay, I think you're next.
Very sorry, Ms. Campbell. I didn't mean to cut you off. Um, I'm Mrs. Pankatay. I teach at Seminole Academy. And I just simply would like to take a moment to, um, thank the Mount Clemens Educational Foundation for once again giving the teachers in the district, uh, grants. Those grants are always very helpful in supplying some of the things we need for our students that there just doesn't seem to be extra funds for. So I know those grants are, um, anticipated each year, and we're very appreciative of that. So we wanted to express our thanks.
Thank you very much for those comments. The agenda is still open for citizens' comments. Patrick, I don't have any way of seeing if anyone's waving or wanting to.
I don't see anyone else in line, Mr. President.
Okay, uh, second call, citizens' comments. Last call for citizens' comments. Hearing or saying none, moving the agenda forward. Agenda item five, consent agenda. Under the consent agenda tonight are the appro, hey, excuse me, approval of the minutes of the November 18th, 2020 regular meeting, the December 10th, 2020 workshop. Bills for approval of bills for payment. Those are two items under consent agenda, items A and B. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the agenda item being discussed.
So moved to approve the minutes for the workshop and the regular meeting.
Moved by Mrs. Jarrett to approve the minutes from the November 18th, 2020 regular meeting, the December 10th, 2020 workshop. Is there a second?
Second.
I can miss Escalante. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing or saying none? Oh, please.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item five B, approval of bills for payment. The chair would entertain a motion.
So move for improvement.
Moved by Dr. McFadden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bruley. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bruley.
Uh, the bills were brought before the committee. Uh, we found all the bills and the financial documents to be in order.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or saying none, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett? Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Next on the agenda, item six, policy committee. This will be the policies for second reading and adoption. Mr. Monk, I'm thinking because I believe Ms. Bills would punt it off to you.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Um, without any additions, I move that the Board of Education approve the second reading of policy 6114, cost principles, spending, federal funds. Policies 6325, procurement, federal grants and funds, and policy 8450.05, which is a new policy, emergency temporary telecommute, telecommuting policy, ETP, and adopt these policies into record of Mount Clemens Community School District.
Has been moved by, excuse me, Member Monk to approve the second reading and adoption of policy 6114, revised cost principles. Policy 6325, revised procurement, federal grants and funds. Policy 8550.05, new emergency temporary telecommuting policy referred to as ETP. Is there a second?
Report.
Second, Dr. McFadden. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or saying none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item seven, Personnel Committee. Mrs. Bills.
Let me unmute for a second. Um, we are requesting that the board approve the hiring of a confidential secretary. Uh, we need someone that will, yeah, with us in the district to communicate with the board of what, with the Board of Education as well as the superintendent's office. The position is a highly confidential position. A lot of confidential things come across my desk and requires a high skill set. In addition, the district had a grant administrator on staff who is being paid through grant funding. So the, because of the staffing change, this Board of Ed Secretary would be, um, would also take care of some of the grant responsibilities, mostly in terms of timelines and in terms of, um, our non-public school, uh, partners. I have more information if you, if you need me to give more. We went through all this at the work session and the personnel meeting.
Yes, we did. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the recommendation for the hiring of a confidential secretary.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I've moved to, uh, approve the hiring of a confidential secretary, uh, for the superintendent.
Moved by Dr. McFadden to approve the hiring of a confidential secretary.
Second.
Second, Mr. Monk. Any questions, discussion on the motion on the floor?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
As was stated by the superintendent, we need to discuss this at the workshop, and we also had this discussion at the Personnel Committee. So, um, if there are any additional questions on that behalf, I'm pretty sure she's open to discussing from there.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing or hearing none? Call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next, item eight, the organizational meeting. Uh, this item is, is on the agenda to establish the, the time and date for the 2021 calendar year organizational meeting. By the state code, we have to hold the meeting prior to the second Monday of the month. I want you to keep that in mind as you are considering, um, your calendars to, uh, have schedule, um, the, excuse me, organizational meeting, uh, for the month of, of January. The second Monday of January would be the 11th. So we'd have to hold the meeting before the 11th.
For the 11th, on the 11th?
Before the 11th.
Wow, okay. Um, I make a recommendation to have it on, uh, sixth or the seventh.
Give me a date and we'll throw it out there and see how it falls out.
About, uh, January 6th.
Has been moved by Member Jarrett to have January 6th, 2021 as the date for the organizational meeting. Is there a support?
I support that.
Second by Dr. McFadden. Are there any, um, Mrs. Jarrett, could you, um, expound upon your motion in terms of, of the time?
Oh, I forgot that part. Okay, so, um, 6:30?
Okay, Member Jarrett, we'll move for the, the re, the organizational meeting for January 6th, 2021 at 6:30. You're still with a second that doc?
I support it, yes, I do.
Okay, so the motion, January 6th, 2021 at 6:30.
Ms. Jarrett, that's due, correct?
I hope so.
Well, uh, we'd have to wait and basically have to wait and see what's going on with the governor.
I can't, I can't imagine us meeting in person with COVID still happening. But I get it.
Well, like Mr. Rickman's saying, that all depends on the governor as if, let me put it this way. If she, if we are still under the current executive order, then it will be, um, virtual. But if she lifts that executive order, then we possibly will have to meet in person, um, pertaining to the new, um, policy, the, the new, uh, Open Meetings Act policy.
Yeah, so it is basically up to what, what goes on, you know, based on her recommendations and extensions because right now the Open Meetings Act is being altered or changed to, for the benefit of virtual meetings due to the pandemic. So that's, that's why I said that would depend on the directors of the governor's office. And we, we, we would know in enough time to be able to make the adjustments, um, for, for, for advertising for that.
Correct, yeah, that's cool.
Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor to hold the organizational meeting on January 6th, 2021 at 6:30 PM? Questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing or saying none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda, nine informational item. Any additional information coming from the Business Committee? Oh, excuse me, I'm, I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Rewind, um, these are items from the business, from the Business Committee. Item one, financial reports. Uh, any questions regarding financial reports?
Um, we had our meeting on.
No, Ms. Jarrett, not yet. That's, I, I'm not, I'm not to committee reports yet, um, to, I'm on item nine. And we're just going through if there are any questions on the financial reports or the open purchase order listings, et cetera, et cetera. Um, okay, any, uh, questions regarding the contract listings? Any questions regarding the facilities listings?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bills, um, have you and your team, um, thought about taking a look at? I'm, I'm looking through this facilities, um, sheet, which, you know, thank you, uh, for getting this back on track. Um, have, have you and your, uh, team looked at, um, what items as far as high priorities can be completed in this budgeted year and what items can be, um, completed in the next, um, year? Um, and I say that to say this, that, you know, you know, pertaining to all the, of the major things that we have, um, that's deteriorating in the district, but also upcoming as far as what we need to take care of as far as our facilities. Um, are, have you, or are you going to put together a plan of what high priority items will be completed this budgeted year and what's, um, will be slated for the next budgeted year?
Yes, Mr. Monk, um, we don't have that ready for you yet, but we are in the process of working with Robin, and Mrs. Potter, um, are organizing all of this for us. It's just, it isn't completed yet.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions, uh, regarding the facilities listings? Bond opening. Well, that takes us down to item 10, Personnel Committee. Any additional personnel update from the committee or Mrs. Beal?
Ms. Bill, you got any, anything additional because, uh, this is not a committee report, correct?
No, this is, this, this is, um.
Information items.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll speak on committee reports, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anything additional, Mrs. Bills?
No, not at this time.
All right, thank you. That takes us to agenda item 11, Superintendent's Comments.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Uh, it's, uh, it's a bittersweet. I will be, um, missing Christina Escalante and Mr. Bruley very, very much. I really appreciated the short time I had to work with both of you, and there's a lot going on. So, um, I thank you for your time and your service to the district, and I'm looking forward to meeting some new board members and getting to know them as well. So a lot of what we will, what I'm going to talk to you about tonight is the reconfirmation of our COVID learning plan. As you know, we are completely remote, and we are completely remote until January 19th, when the district will be going back to hybrid unless, of course, there's some reasons why we're shut down again. At this point, um, Paul, could you share your screen, please, and show some of the? What I wanted to do was show some data to the board members and the community. Now, I know that you just got this data. We just got it as well. And we're going to spend a full day in a workshop retreat going over all of the data for the district. What I wanted to do was just offer you just a quick snapshot. So if you're look right here, this is grade two, and we're looking at math scores. So when I look, I'm going to just close the, the board off so I can see the whole thing on my screen. So when I look at this piece of data, what this is telling me is that the students that scored high, there was one student that scored high in the math in second grade, and there were 36 students that were in the very, very low percentile. If you look up at the summary where it says norm, grade mean writ, which is the second from the bottom, and it says 175, that's what, and that's what normal seventh graders across the country would score on this, on this test. Our average score, if you look, the second one from the top, it's 159.5. There were 61 students that took this math test. And again, this was when we were partly remote and we were also partly hybrid. So it was, there was a lot of work that the teachers did, and the staff at Seminole were amazing to get the kids into test. So Paul, if you could move down a little bit and see if we can find a three-five score? So, all right, here's our reading score for grade three. And this was a, this is an interesting graph as well for all of our students because the very first line where it shows low, low average, average in the colors, um, it shows us that we had six students that scored in the high range, one at the high average, and seven in the average range. And then we had 46 students that were below average, or 76% of the kids. But if you look at this, each one of the scores gives us a goal area as well. So in reading, there's a vocabulary, there's informational text. How well do students read informational texts, literary text, um, language crafts, um, structure? What's the main idea of the story? Um, the same with, um, literary texts with key ideas and details. What, how does the author, author support the premise or the whole idea behind what he's, what we're reading? And informational text, key ideas and details. So this is something where if you can see that our students, again, are below the norm for grade three. If you could find someone in grades six through eight, oh, head down. Keep going, I think you're in fifth. Yep. One more. Perfect. Here's seventh grade math. This again is, it's really, it's a, it's a big umbrella. It's a 10,000-foot, um, look at our kids. 48 students took the test. The norm for seventh grade math is 220.2. Our students, the average of our kids was 207.4. You can look at the scores to see how many students we have in the low range and how many students we have in the high range. And now if you could go to the high school? Keep going. Grade 10, we're back in math again, which is fine. Um, so you can see that our math. Grade ten, we're back in math again, which is fine. Um so you can see that our math scores, looking at the top, are not what we would wish them to be. The norm is two twenty-nine point one, and our score is two eighteen point seven. Just an an explanation, a RIT score, which a a lot of people might not know exactly what it is, is the level where a student is ready to learn. It kind of pinpoints where a student would just as likely answer a question incorrectly as correctly. It's kind of the point between knowing and not knowing. So you can see as we go through that um our students struggle in math at the high school level as well. That's across the board. If you could keep heading all the way down to the next sheet, it's going to say pass fail, and there's some red. And so go all the way down. Right there. So go back up just a little bit, um see if we can, we can get this whole sheet on. So here are our students with grades. So we don't give grades K two. Um students have a score, but we don't have pass fail. So if you look at these scores, this is on the very latest report card. And again, it's a snapshot, the report card, this was for the first quarter grades. So I'm going to leave this score, this sheet up, and I want to talk to you a little bit about GPA. I was requested to um give the GPAs of students that scored at a two point oh or higher. So a two point oh is a D um and higher. So I'm just going to read this. I just got this data this afternoon. And again, we will go over this in depth when we have our retreat in January. In sixth grade, ten percent of the students had a two point oh and higher, ninety percent were lower. Seventh grade, twenty-five percent had a two point oh or higher GPA, seventy-five percent were lower. Twelfth grade, twenty-nine percent had a higher than two point oh GPA, seventy-one percent of the students had a lower GPA. I think that this information is telling us that our our students need us, they need their teachers, and they need to see us face to face. The attendance while we were remote, the A A group, um which was the Monday Tuesday group that they attended, was eighty-nine percent. The B B group was eighty-six point five percent. So just a a reminder that we are remote until January nineteenth, when we will um be turned to hybrid instructions. Are there any questions? I I know this is a lot of data, and I I just wanted you to be able to see how important we are, how important our teachers are to our students.
Yeah, I have one question, and thank you for the information. This information that you're showing us right now, this, this, this shot. Um as we move forward and, you know, I know we're going to have a, you know, more in detailed workshop going over this information. Can we have something similar to this from last year to compare it to and against?
Absolutely. Um we definitely will. We're going to have the, we'll have the N W E A scores from last year. We will also have the first quarter grades as well. Depending on when our workshop is, uh no, it's going to be in January. Um the mid semester is on the end of January. So the kids will have their final exams and final grades, but they won't be ready for us in time for our workshop. But we'll be going over this data in depth, and we'll be looking at grades for last year all the way through, and then the first quarter of this year.
Thank you.
Um. I got, I got one question, kind of twofold. Uh you don't need to give me the information tonight. Uh as far as the testing, uh the results that you show, what percentage does that represent of our students? Is it ninety percent? Is it eighty percent? Is it ninety-five percent, a hundred percent? And also, um what um, God, I just lost train of thought for my second question. Okay, can't remember it now. But yeah, I mean, far as the test results do that, how does that, do that represent all of the students or part? I mean, what what number of students do that represent?
Okay, so wait, but I will have all those percentages for you, but if you um would look back at the N W E A data, it tells you how many students were tested, and then comparing that to the number of students in um in each grade level, and I'll have that data all for you. It was interesting that um today at one of my meetings is N W E A has also done a study um because of the remote learning and what scores did they expect to not be so do so well? What scores surprised them? Um and one of the things that the N W E A did notice is that reading scores didn't go down as much as expected. And and I think that that's because a a lot of parents will will stay home, will sit down and read with their kids um because that's what they're a little bit more familiar, and math scores went down quite a bit because of all the remote learning. And math is a little bit different for parents to be helping kids with, so um so there's a lot, a little bit more support at home for reading in terms of our times of COVID.
Uh, I have a question. Um what I, the scores are not great, but I mean, I get it. We got remote learning and stuff, but um what is the plan to assist these kids after January nineteen? Because the remote learning is, you know, not optimal, the hybrid and everything. Um, how do we help the kids that are really struggling? Because it looks like there's a lot of kids struggling here. What's the plan? If there isn't a plan, can we get some information on that?
We are, um Mr. Duncan and Mr. Lewis are, Lucas, I'm sorry, are really working hard with their teachers to help start developing those plans for the kids. We have support for students um at the middle school in terms of math support. We have two teachers that teach math, but also offer some math support classes. We also have some support classes that are offered at the high school level as well. We have some um behavior specialists over at um Seminole that will also be able to help with the um with reading and math support. We have Mrs. Hill and we have Mrs. Gearing that are helping teachers to support teachers and in helping them be better teachers of math and language arts. So we do have a lot of supports. We're going to find that we're going to need some more, and we will be taking care of that. We still have some COVID money left over from the first SRS grant, and we're looking at possibly hiring an additional person to give some additional support.
Um I just see this as a long-term uh issue that's going to be um go into the future, and it's going to affect our kids for several years because of all this stuff with the remote learning and what they've lost.
I agree. I definitely agree.
Thank you.
Any additional question?
Conference.
Say you're, I was going to say you're muted, sir.
Yeah, thank you. I I my my screen showed me you're muted. You're talking, but you can't. Uh again, any additional questions or comments uh to the superintendent regarding um the report that she's presented to us? Knowing that we're going greater detail. Mrs. Beals?
That's um, that's all I have um for this time, other than um I just wish that our staff and our board and our kids, um that everyone has a wonderful holiday season, and please be safe, um which means social distance, wear a mask, wash your hands. There's there's so many ways that we can keep each other safe, and it's really important that we do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Beal. Now, item twelve Committee Reports. Anything additional from the Business Finance Committee?
Uh the Business Finance Committee met, and uh we went over all the um items that were on the report list. Um no further information at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any questions to the Chair? Mr. Lennonberry?
I do not have an official report from the Coalition other to, other than to uh wish everyone in the district a very happy holiday, the Merry Christmas on behalf of the Coalition, the cable staff. And I'd like to thank on a personal note, Mr. Brulee and Mrs. Escalante for their service to the district on the school board.
Thank you, Mr. Lennonberry. Any questions? Curriculum Personnel?
Yes, uh uh thank you, Mr. President. Uh we had a regular monthly meeting as usual. Um the whole, the all the team players was there. Uh as the superintendent spoke earlier, we discussed everything at those meetings at the last workshop. Um there's nothing more to present to the board, except for what was talked about with the board secretary hiring. We went over food services, after people accounting, things of that nature. But everything we talked, or I will present tonight, we already presented Thursday. So no need to beat a uh dead horse with a stick. It's not going to run any faster. Unless there's any additional questions, I'm open to whatever is may maybe asked.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Any questions at the Chair? Does a dead horse run?
No.
Exactly. You can't make a dead horse run, so no need to beat it with a stick.
You said.
But you can try to get him to get up, though.
You said they make a dead horse run faster.
Hey. Uh any more additional questions about the dead horse?
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Educational Foundation, um based on the comments from uh Mrs. Campbell, thanking Educational Foundation for for the grants for the teachers, there's been some activity. I'm just unaware of that. Um how about you, Mr. Lennonberry?
No, other than they'll be giving me a schedule of an upcoming meeting, and I'm sure they're going to want to use my Zoom account. Uh I don't have anything to answer.
All right. See, that's two of us.
I know as much as you do, sir.
Yes, sir. Now I don't feel bad, like left out, you know? Um, Mr. Monk, any additional information from the Policy Committee? Anything coming down the pipe or?
Uh no definite, no additional information. We do have a major policy update that usually comes through in February, so stay tuned for that. Um and on a lighter note, I want to thank Ms. Escalante for her passion of service on the committee. She will be greatly missed.
Thank you, sir, for those comments. Um Legislative, uh they had a legislative meeting at the same time we had our workshop. Uh so I opted to go to our workshop. Mrs. Beal, is is there anything that the superintendents discussed regarding legislative uh information?
Um I, all I know, we had a meeting today, and one of the comments was, we're waiting, um the state is sitting on um four hundred million dollars in COVID uh money still, and we're hoping that some of that will come to the schools. Um we're looking forward to what will happen. If it doesn't happen this week, then then we'll have to wait till January, so we're hoping for some sort of a stimulus. The other piece that's really interesting in legislation is the fact of substitute teachers and um anyone who has a high school diploma and is working in a school district can serve as a sub, which um I think is really interesting. Um I would tell you that years ago, I would have been horrified at this. And now, when I look at the shortage of subs, and if we have someone in our schools that knows our kids and gets along with our kids really, really well and can help move them forward, we'll take them. So um so that's an interesting piece. We haven't, of course, needed that at this point, but it's just something to keep on our radar.
Thank you, Mrs. Beals. Next on the agenda, item thirteen Board Comments. We'll begin with Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um well, year has ended. We're upon the holiday. Wish everybody will stay safe. Um we're going to do our part in the Monk household. Um again, we told our son to stay in Minnesota. Um told our daughter to stay on the uh east side of Grashit. Um and hopefully, um we'll have a better holiday season next year. Um thank you to Mrs. Uh Beals and her staff and everyone um under the umbrella of Mount Clemens Community School District. Um wishing everyone a happy holiday. Um get some rest, stay safe, um and try to enjoy uh what holiday uh that kid that you can enjoy. Um for, I will start with uh Ms. Escalante. Um you have been sitting to my right side for the last four years. Um a lot of people don't know that we talk a lot before, after, and during um our meetings, and um I'm not going to get too mushy, and I'll talk to you later on a more personal note, but you you know, I said, Pat, you know, it's a passion of service that you went out and got elected and sat on the board for four years. Um so I want to thank you for your passion um for this district, for the students, for the staff. Um and um I'm personally going to miss you, but like I said, um last month, we will definitely be walking our dogs together. Um, Mr. Brulee, you, I really, really appreciate you. Um you make people think. Um you think outside the box. Um and you do a lot of things um for this district that a lot of people don't know on a personal level. Um put it in your personal time and effort um for the well-being and for the future development of our student minds. Um thank you for your passion. Um for being on this board for as long as you have. Um you are a great thinker. Um and I'm going to miss you most definitely because I've been sitting across from you for the last six years. Um and I really, really will miss your uh wise counsel and 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 your tenacity and everything that you have done and brought to the table on this board. Um to my fellow board members, I wish every one of you a happy holiday, a safe holiday. Um and we will see you on the other side in twenty twenty-one. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Dr. McFadden?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Um first of all, I want to thank the district and everybody that works in the district for being so tedious and taking everything that needs to be serious, serious. Uh we are in those times where uh we just can't that can't be complacent. I want to thank them for doing the extra work and 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 endeavoring. But what I really want to get to is want to thank uh Mrs. Escala, can you hear me?
I can, yes, we can hear you.
I really want to thank Mrs. Escalante. Uh Mrs. Escalante, you have brought a a plethora of information and wealth to this board. I appreciate your insight and your thoughts and your passion. Um you have made me a better board member, and I believe you have made the board in this school district a better place. I want to thank you. And also to Mr. Brulee. Mr. Brulee is an incredible individual. His thoughts and his experience is far beyond none. We couldn't have been more lucky or blessed to have such an individual as Mr. Brulee on the board. He brought the hard questions to the front, and he wasn't afraid to always push the envelope because he knew the envelope needed to be pushed. Mr. Brulee, I want to truly miss you, and Mrs. Escalante, I'm going to miss you also. Um we are losing two great assets, and I'm pretty sure we're going to gain two more assets. But the two we're talking about tonight are truly great assets. I want to say thank you. And whatever you guys do in the future, uh if you need anything, need any help, whatever, my door is open. You got my number. Call me, please. I will jump through fire, jump through loops, walk through fire for you, and I appreciate you. Those are my comments, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Mrs. Jarrett?
Thank you, um, Mr. President. I I know the holidays are uh right upon us, and it brings us to a time that we have to stay safe and keep our families safe. Um I hope that everyone um adheres to that. Um as Mr. Monk had said, um As Mr. Monk had said, I am doing the same thing. My kids have to stay away from mom, and I just do drive-bys. But I do want to, I've learned a lot from our departing board members, Ms. Escalante. I, you know, just the talents and the information and the knowledge that you helped me to be a better board member as well as Mr. Brewley. And yes, I didn't always agree, and I know that there were a lot of things that, the hard questions that came up and stuff that did make me think and help me to be a better board member as well. I know that you guys, in your future, wherever you do in the future, you're going to do great things for yourselves and community, and you continue to do so. It's been a pleasure and an honor working with you. Finally, I want to thank the staff and our superintendent and all the staff, I'm sorry, I'm tongue-tied sometimes. All the things that you do that nobody sees, I truly, truly appreciate everything that you guys do. Without you, we would not be able to accomplish the many things that we had. And it's only been a short time, but we've accomplished a lot, and you guys have really done a lot to get things squared away and help us to move forward, even during those times, these difficult times with COVID. There are so many more things that we need to do for the district and for our, our youth and the communities. I want everybody to stay optimistic, keep, keep an open mind, and take your happiness with you. I, I, I know that it's difficult in the winter time, and I struggle as well, but we will come through this. We'll, we'll move forward and, and have better times for the Mount Clemens schools. And once again, once a bather, always a bather. I hope you guys have a great holiday.
Thank you. This is Jared. This is Escalante.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for those beautiful comments and beautiful words. It means a lot to me. It's really strange to be sitting here right now and realizing that four years has just gone by. It seemed like it was just taking forever, and now it's here. And I guess that's just life, you know? When we're young, they say, we feel like it doesn't go fast enough, and we want to be a certain age. We want to be adults, and then we become adults, and we want to be kids again, be able to take naps and do adult stuff. So my point is, the four years has gone by very quickly. I remember when I found out that I was elected, I was extremely excited, but I was also very nervous because I had no idea what I was doing, never even considered taking on a position of this nature. It wasn't anything I was honestly interested in, but I was approached by Mary Campbell and Selena Tan. And they, they told me to go for it, and I did it. And I think it's one of the best things that I ever did. What I've learned the most in servicing this community and this district and serving with my colleagues is that it can't be about you. It has to be about the community and the children and what's best. And I learned that from all of you. I've learned so much from all of my colleagues. I don't want to get too mushy, as Mr. Monk said, because I do feel a little bit of emotions that I wasn't expecting. But I'll start with this. So for my colleagues, I want to leave you with one of my favorite verses from the Bible. It's Philippians 1, chapter 3, and it says, "I thank my God every time I remember you." I don't consider this a goodbye, it's just different path. I think that, I think of all of you as my friends, and I have different relationships with each of you. But each of you have made me a better person. You made me a better board member. You guided me, you taught me, and I will be forever grateful for that. And so I will not be saying goodbye to you. I will see all of you at some point as our lives and paths cross. To my predecessors, I believe it's Jamie and Stephanie that are going to be coming on and taking mine and Mr. Brewley's places. I want to leave you with this verse. It's Proverbs 3:17, and it says, "Wisdom makes life pleasant and leads us safely along." One of the best things you can do for this board is bring your wisdom on board. And just know that you are going to be surrounded by some amazing people who are going to have the same interests as you, the same drives and reasons for doing what they're doing, and that you're in good hands. And I wish you both the best of luck, and I know that you're going to do great things for this district. To the entire district, the all-staff, teachers, admin, support, custodian, everybody. Basically, if you work or service this district, this is for you. It's from the Bible as well. It's Galatians, chapter 6, verse 9, and it says, "Don't get tired of helping others. You will be rewarded when the time is right, if you don't give up." Don't give up. This district has come too far. You guys are the backbone, you guys are what holds it together. From the custodians that, you know, wave to the children in the morning as they're cleaning, the teachers, the bus drivers, everybody. You guys have held this district together, and the good that you are doing is going to bring reward if you don't give up. So don't give up, keep going. And then I also want to speak to the students, because this has been such an unconventional time and not being able to be with your, your classmates and in-person learning. This is a verse that I, I really, really love, and it comes from the book of Timothy, and it's chapter 4, verse 12. And it says, "Don't let anybody make fun of you just because you are young. Set an example for other followers by what you say and do, as well as by your love, faith, and purity." You guys are our future. You are why we are all here, trying to do what we're doing. And really, you guys teach us. We've learned from you, and you've been an example to many adults. And I have been blessed to work with some of the most beautiful children outside of my own within this district. And I think that is one of the things I'll miss the most and have missed since COVID has, you know, taken that away from many of us. So just know that you have all been blessed, blessings, all, all of the students in this district. It's really been an amazing journey. I'm never going to forget what an honor and a privilege it has been. And it was a privilege that was given to me when I was elected. And I've learned so many things that I will take with me forever, and I just want to thank you all. I, I'm, I'll be around. I'm a bather, I graduated from this district. So again, it's not goodbyes, just see you later. My dream and my hope and my future goal is to get my degree in nursing. I want to be a nurse. So we'll see if I can make that happen. I'm sure I can if I put my mind to it, but it's difficult when you have a young family at home. So right now, that's my focus, and that's going to be my focus. And when the time is right, I'll serve in a different way. So, so much love to all of you. I wish you all a beautiful holiday season, stay safe, stay healthy, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Escalante. Mr. Brewley?
So, thank you very much. I want to first thank all the staff in the district that I have had the great opportunity to work with. I think that is the people that we need to put our trust and faith in. I think they try to do the best job they can under difficult circumstances. Difficult circumstances being the economics that we find ourselves. Our district is economically challenged. We have been the brunt of state policies that, in fact, have not helped us much. But people have pioneered on and done the best, I think, we could with what we have. I want to thank all the present and the former board members that I've served with. My comments at no time were directed at anyone personally. At times, it may have seemed that way, but they weren't. They tried to be directed at policy and at the changes that I thought we needed to get as a district. I think we've come a long way financially. We've stabilized, we've done the hard things that we had to do to get where we are today that, that gives us some stability. I joined the board not really to deal with all the financial issues, but really thinking that each and every student was the ones that we should be serving as best we can because each and every student, I believe, can learn. I think sometimes our students down deep believe they cannot. I don't believe that. I believe each and every one of our kids can learn and learn a lot. I think, though, that we have to change the way that we deliver our services to our students. We've had to change a lot during this pandemic. We should use that way that has forced us to change to rethink how we deliver services to our students and figure out ways that are going to allow them to learn even more in the future. That may be more strengthening of hours that we give them in the regular school year and in the summer. We need to, without stressing out our staff, we need to find ways and go to the state and complain that we are not getting the money required to have our kids learn the way they can learn. And I, I think we have to take a bigger out-front toll on that. I thank everybody for their efforts. I think everybody wants our kids to be as successful as possible. But I think we have to rethink how we do things. I offer my services to our new board members. Thank you for serving, to the people on the board. And I, as a resident of the district, would love to be involved, not in the governance of the schools, but in the helping of academic achievement so that every student can be as successful as possible. So if there's a project or something going on that I can help with, please call. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brewley. I'd like to begin by saying that 2020, the calendar year, has been one heck of a year. We were going along. March hit us, and the sky fell, and we had to change how we did everything that we do in this society that we had grown accustomed to and, and in this world. And in doing so, we, we had to do a lot of things differently. And oftentimes, we were making things up as we went along to do, to get the best effort, put in our best efforts to get the best results that we could. This pandemic has changed everybody's lives forever. And it has definitely had an impact on our students. We have some students that are doing well to okay under the current learning environment that we are forced to be in. We have many students that it's very challenging for them. I, I know of a couple of cases in the same house, same household where one of the students is doing good with the remote learning, and the other student is struggling with the remote, remote learning. So it's all based on individuals and how their learning modalities are. And we all learn in different modalities. And right now, we all know, and the data shows that remote learning is not the best environment for our students. But in the present climate of what's going on, it's the only manner by which we can safely attempt to address the needs of our students to a certain level because of the safety of keeping our students safe, our staff safe, and all those that they come in contact with. Oh, there, there's data out there showing that schoolhouse and the schoolyard is not the opportunities and the infection grounds that are happening, but they could come in contact, take it home, or come in contact with somebody, and that person takes it home. Their elderly parents or someone in their household that may have some kind of pre-existing conditions, and they become sick. So we have not made, as a board, have not made any decision that we make in terms of how we deliver the instructional process to our students. We have not taken it lightly, and we, and in fact, are adhering to the guidelines by the state of Michigan and the CDC, et cetera. But we all wish that our students were back in the classroom with their, with their peers, with their teachers. And hopefully, that day will come again. But before we, we do it, we have to make our decisions based on data and good, sound information to keep everybody safe. To all of our staff, I say thank you for being willing and able to change how you perform the duties and responsibilities that you've done for so many, so many years that now you, I thank you for being able to change the modality and the, the paradigm by which you provided those, those instructions to your students. They're all, all involved in the district. I, I say thank you because this has been a tremendous, ongoing, and everybody had to change how they operated in order to provide the best services for our students. So whether you're an administrator, a teacher, support staff, parapro, whatever, I, I say thank you to all the, the school community. I, I wish you well during this holiday season. I know COVID fatigue is a reality, but COVID, the disease, is also a reality. And all you have to do is turn on the news and, and hear the numbers. I just say, be safe, be smart, take care of each other. Wear a mask, some kind of face covering, social distance when you possibly can. Wash your hands when you're not feeling well, stay home, and, you know, isolate yourself until you can feel much better. It's the best thing to do for you and those around you. One reason I stated my comments last month during this board comments about my departing colleagues on the board, Mrs. Escalante and Mr. Brewley, because generally, as the chair, I'm the last to make comments, and I would have sounded redundant by saying some of the same things that my colleagues said before me. So I beat them to the punch on this one. That's why I, I started out a month early with my congratulations and, and my, my thoughts about my colleagues that are departing the board, Mr. Brewley and Mrs. Escalante. But I, I will have a do-over on that. I did mention that last, in the last month, that last meeting's month, last meetings, last month's meeting, that we had two departing board members that had served for eight years, and that was Mr. Brewley and Mrs. Escalante. I was mistaken by saying Mrs. Escalante had been on the board for eight years, but the way she nagged me for four years, it seemed like eight years.
Hey, then I did my job.
But again, I will say that eight years ago, Mr. Brewley, when you first joined this board, this board was in, in a tough situation. And I remember asking you, why would you run, you know, knowing the condition of the district? And you said, that's why we ran, knowing the condition of the district, and really respect that. And I, I said a lot of things last month that I stated, and some of my colleagues repeated today about your service on the board. And you will be missed, and, oh, yeah, we definitely heard you, and it's on record that you're saying that anything we can do. And, uh, you will be missed. And, oh yeah, we definitely heard you, and it's on record that you're saying that anything we can do, uh, that you think, that you could be assistance, uh, we will, we have your contact information. And I'm sure notes were being taken, and we will take you up on that offer. Same, same with you, Mrs. Escalante. Uh, once a bather, always a bather. We gonna remember that, and we're gonna, you know, ask you for some bather favor, favors, I, I'm pretty sure. Um, but again, it was my pleasure to have worked and served with, you know, both of you, uh, during your tenure on the board. And, and I can say that, uh, in eight years, you being on the board, Mr. Brewley, and four years of your being on the board, Mrs. Escalante, this district has moved forward. We have gotten better. We have dug, we have dug ourselves out of a hole that we were in, uh, when both of you joined the board. And with, uh, both of your input, uh, tenacity and hard work, uh, as part of the team, uh, we were able to dig ourselves out of that hole and to put ourselves on a more stable, uh, platform, a more stable position. So you can be proud, and you can honestly say that the district is in better shape and condition than it was when you joined the board. So I salute you two and, and thank you, uh, for, for your service, uh, to the district. Everybody be safe. Have a happy holiday. Um, to my colleagues moving forward, uh, we have a lot of work to do. Uh, we made a lot of, uh, tough decisions in the past, and we, we have a lot more, uh, tough decisions to make in the future. Um, those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion for adjournment.
A move.
Move by Member Monk.
Support.
Seconded by Member Escalante. Other role, please.
Hey, Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Ms. Jared?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at seven forty-two. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays. Bye.
Bye.